Tennessee and July. Because I have a cabin. It's like right on the side of a mountain. Kind of commercialized, not really. But it's nice there.
There's a lot of people in Tarpon. Basically, there's the Tennessee people that have cabins and like Maggie hold up Carolina or Maggie.
Right, yeah.
They have a lot of people here.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And people, you know, I mean, you do something for so long and you get the heat in the oceans and people want them out.
That's me. Beach, I was raised right here. Ain't nothing special.
Really, my ideal eventually, when I retire and you're comfortable, want to get away from some.
My dad.
Yeah.
Was made part of the gag.
At that point.
Yeah.
There's so many options.
Again. So.
Your work, your work.
Mm-hmm.
They love it.
The train. Yeah, I've taken that.
Fun, yeah.
The bedtime story.
Oh, they, yeah.
So, do read all those.
Yeah.
You should line out there. That stuff, that you really stay focused to get through.
He's not on the.
He's on the.
Yeah, but he's in.
It's underneath that one.
All the way to that?
Yeah, I think it's that one.
Oh, yeah.
The dresser, the light stand.
I felt.
He said it was the cutest thing. I'm gonna go. I wanted to. I know. I can do it. I brought my folder. Wait, we're ready.
Yes, thank you.
You will.
Jason, you want to do the prayer?
Not yet.
Yeah.
I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seaver's absent and excused. Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome you to our commission meeting. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Jason Clemus. Please. Yes, right there. If you please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just thank you for this time together. Lord, I thank you for all the officials and the commissioners and the mayor's office. Lord, your protective hand upon Tarpon Springs, and we just thank you for this city, Lord. We thank you, and we lift up our officials to you. We pray for wisdom for them, Lord, a blessing on their families and all that they're doing, all the law enforcement and firemen and first responders, Lord. We're just so thankful for this city. So, Lord, we just place this city into your hand, this meeting time, and we just ask that there'd be even divine creative ideas to the problems and all the issues that arise with these leaders, Lord, that they would have the wisdom that comes from above. So, Father, in Jesus' name, we just thank you for this meeting. Thank you for every person here. Amen.
Pledge allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Reverend Jason, thank you very much. Mr. Licorice is on vacation tonight. Mr. Kochen is going to be the acting city manager. Thank you for doing that.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
And also, the city attorney is not going to be here tonight, so Mrs. Agel is going to be here with us. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you.
We are now going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward. Here none? Oh, here that one. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Wanda Kimsey. I live at eight nine four Royal Bourne Dale Drive in Tarpon Springs. I'm a student in the Public Policy and Administration Program at Saint Petersburg College. The reason I'm here tonight is my capstone project that I'm currently working on relates to the City of Tarpon Springs Emergency Management Plan. Governmental agencies have employees working in certain positions where it is mandatory for employees to report to work during a state of emergency or disaster situation. My mission statement is to promote the City of Tarpon Springs Emergency Management Plan as a model that promotes, excuse me, that provides a designated shelter space solely for the families and pets of city government employees who are required to work during emergency and disaster events. The City of Tarpon Springs is one of the unique governmental agencies who has incorporated this policy into their personnel manual. As part of my public relations plan, I will be submitting an article to the Florida City and County Management Association promoting the City of Tarpon Springs Emergency Plan as a model. The article will be published in the July thirty first, two thousand seventeen News for City and County Managers Newsletter. Additionally, my capstone project will be listed on the Florida City and County Management Association website in their Research Paper section for other cities and counties to review. I would like to thank Mr. Licorice, who has been extremely supportive in my quest for information regarding my capstone project. Also, I'd like to thank Deputy Chief Young, Duffy Smith, and Ms. Niffen for their assistance. I'd like to say kudos to the city for having the foresight to implement these policies. My capstone presentation before the panel of judges is on July tenth. Once everything has been approved, I will provide a copy of my capstone to Mr. Licorice. Again, thank you for your dedication and your commitment to providing excellent services to the city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Delacas?
All right, Peter Delax, five one four Ashland Avenue. First off, I would like to greatly thank Mr. Paul Smith, Mayor Alahuza's, and for attending the climate change, weather change seminar that Mr. Goan put together with the church on the bayou last Saturday. So, thank you for your attendance, and hopefully, when we have these, we can get more information out as to getting people involved. And as the mayor and as Paul, and maybe some of you are quite aware of, Tarpon Springs is on the front line of rising seas. Secondly, I wanted to talk about, and I know we'll talk about the penny distribution later, but the Friends of the Anclot forwarded to the board last Friday a listing of all the approved projects that the Florida Communities Trust approved for funding for two thousand seventeen. And guess what? Again, Tarpon Springs isn't on that list. Why not? Because this board has not, and previous boards have not taken the action to apply for this. Now, just for those who aren't aware of it, the Florida Communities Trust is a grant program through the state where we only have to pay twenty-five percent of the funding to purchase property, and they provide seventy-five percent. Now, just a little overview. Upper Santa Fe River Corridor, Elatcho Conservation Trust got a million dollars. Cypress Creek Preserve out of Saint Luce County got one point six. Ocean Hammock Park Phase Two out of Saint Augustine Beach got one point five. Even Little Village of Key Biscayne for their Hampton Lane project got over eight hundred thousand dollars. Projects approved subject to funding, there's two here for Ludlum Trail for the City of Miami and Miami-Dade County for over five million. The Waukesha Basin Preservation Project Levy County, one point five. Hammock Park Expansion, the City of Dunedin, six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. We would like our share of this money. It's available. We just need to start the process. And even if we don't get it, like ineligible, the City of Newport Ritchie asked for one point six. At least we'll get, if you're familiar with it, we'll be able to get our projects ranked, so we get our points. And then we know where we're deficient in and where we need to get more points to get the eligibility. And some of you know what I'm talking about. And what I'm really talking about is the Walmart property. Because right now, I believe, we could get that for six million dollars. One point five would be ours. We'd get four and a half million. There's plenty of people here that got one point five million or more. Why can't we? And I'm telling you now, like I told you before, when the appraisal comes in for those two little properties across from Craig Park, it's probably going to be close to two million or more. So, you look at seventy-four acres that you can create a recreation, as I've spoken to you all again about other ideas we have about how to utilize that for the community, how we can make money from mitigation by selling mitigation credits, get rid of all the Brazilian peppers in there in exchange for mitigation credits where we get money. Do we know of any other properties in the city that make money off of themselves or have that potential, other than us providing additional services on it? So, as we get close to the penny discussions later, please consider what we've been talking about for years, and some of you have supported in your campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Here none? We are now going to the presentation with just item number one, Anclot River dredge project update. Well, my fellow commissioners, I want to update you and the public on the latest information regarding the Anclot River dredge project. As we all know, on June second, it was Friday, we learned that the Governor Scott vetoed the, vetoed the funding for our project from the state two thousand eighteen budget. Monday, June fifth, we sent a letter to Governor Scott asking him for his consideration to restore funding. We also included a resolution which was scheduled to be approved on June sixth, B O C meeting, which was the next day. Commissioner Seaver requested that this item to be placed on the agenda to be discussed, and we had a very, very healthy discussion. Also, on June fifth, I called Governor Scott and I spoke with him. I spoke with his personal assistants. Her name is Mrs. Samuel, and I expressed my disappointment in the project veto and explained to her the importance of the Anclot River that our local economy is dependent on, and the channel is very unsafe for the large vessels to navigate. She stated to me that the governor has no mechanism to override his veto. So, we had to look for another, we had to look for another avenue to get the revenue. She said that funding might be available through the Economic Development Program, which will be established. Based on that information, I discussed our options with Mr. Licorice. Mr. Licorice worked with Ms. Lemons and Mr. Robinson. They prepared a package which was sent to Governor Scott, to Senator Advala, Representative Chris Sprouls, us to the B O C, and to the Marine Commerce Committee. On June sixteen, Mr. Licorice and I contacted the governor's office and we spoke to Ms. C. C. Proctor. She is the Service Executive Director of Economic Opportunities, to ensure that they receive the package for the governor's review, and also, we wanted to know who is the contact person, who is the person that we're going to be dealing with, so we have a direct communication. Well, yesterday at eleven A. M., we had a conference call with Mrs. Proctor from Tallahassee representing Governor Scott. In attendance in Tarpon Springs was Bob Robinson and Ms. Lemons and myself. We discussed the project in detail. And yesterday late afternoon, I received another call from Mr. Jim Papel. She, he is, he reports to Mr. Proctor. Also, the acting manager, Kochen, was there as well. And he wanted to let us know that no one has been assigned yet to the Economic Development Program, and he's going to let us know when that happens. So, after this point, we know that it's going to be an Economic Development Program, and funding will be available, but no one is in charge of the program yet. Also, Mr. Licorice, with Karen Lemons and Bob Robinson, are preparing additional packages to be hand-delivered to the elected officials of the federal level. Will include the United States Senators, Bill Nelson and Marco Rubio. Also, the United States Representatives of the area, including Gus Billy Racus, Daniel Webster, Charlie Crist, Kathy Kexter, Kester, and Dennis Ross. And I will be hand-deliver those packages to them and explain to them the importance of this project, because we're going to need their help to get the funding to be transferred to the Army Corps of Engineering, Engineers, for the dredging to take place. So, this is the latest information that we have regarding our project. It's very frustrating, but we're working with it. We're going to continue working with that to make sure it gets done. I'd like to take this opportunity to help and to thank Mr. Licorice, Ms. Lemons, and Mr. Robinson. They worked so hard preparing all those packages and being part of the phone calls that we make to Tallahassee and let them know the, how important this project is to us. Before I turn it over to, before I ask for public comments, I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor Panthers for your comments.
Yes, thank you. And I was absent, obviously, from the last meeting, and I appreciate the extra time that staff has put in over the last few weeks. Obviously, I spent several hours on the phone with Spraws and Mark Licorice and Karen Lemons, and I appreciate Commissioner Seaver putting this on the agenda two weeks ago for, 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 um, the, uh, the, the, this, 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 this discussion. And then I appreciate the mayor, all that you've done in talking with the, with the, with the, with the, with the governor's office and following up with him. I think, as I said in my memo, that we learned a valuable lesson in that, you know, we can't just trust that our representatives, no matter who they are, and we have great ones, that they're going to get this done for us. And I think we learned that we have to do exactly what we're doing now, like, Mayor, how you're communicating with the, with the, with the governor's office frequently. I think it's going to take trips to Tallahassee, which have been done before in prior boards. You know, we'll have to learn how we can do that appropriately, obviously. But I think us staying in front of them, because there's so many projects, we can mail them all the resolutions that we want and the studies, and that's good, but there's, you know, there's probably thousands of people right behind us doing those same things. So, I think the most that we keep in front of them physically, you know, and also verbally on the phone helps. And as well, I still encourage the public to keep contacting Chris, Chris, Chris Sprowls' office and Jack's office as well, to encourage them to fight for it. I do have kind of lessened hopes that we'll get funding from the state for this project, but I appreciate, you know, any efforts that are made to get us funding. Perhaps this new opportunity could provide us that funding. I think the only way that's going to happen is if we physically just, 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 uh, stay in front of them constantly. We can't rest that, you know, our representatives or whatever are working for us a hundred percent, because, as we saw, and correct me if I'm, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mayor, but the governor's office said originally that they had never even seen our impact study, correct?
Yeah, at the very beginning.
Yeah, and we, I mean, how many times did we send that to Tallahassee or give it to our representatives? So, I think that shows that we have to, obviously, we have to send things, but just to stay on top of it and just, and just, 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 just stay in front of it. I'm glad that the project still can continue to carry on. But, you know, I would just, you know, next year is an election year, obviously, and maybe we'll get some more attention then, but I think it just needs to be well-known that people that represent us in Tallahassee need to perform and need to be able to assist us with this dredging on all levels. I have reached out to Nelson's office, because I've just been in touch with them since the beginning on this through, I think it's Shara Anderson is our, is our rep with them, and I'm going to be having a call with one of their staffers in D. C. that's, I guess, assists the, 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 ascended her most with these, with these projects. So, when I have an update for that, I'll do memo, obviously. But I appreciate y'all's efforts, and I really do appreciate you, Mayor, the way you're continuing to stay on top of the governor and be proactive about it, and the rest of this, this board as well. I know everyone's made their own individual efforts in contacting people, but I would just urge the public that we have to stay on top of this, that your role is just as important as ours in this, and you have to keep in contact with all the representatives, because if we don't put the pressure on them, it's just not going to happen. So, that's pretty much it. And again, I appreciate you all carrying the water in the, in the last meeting and doing that, that resolution and go in talking about it.
Vice Mayor Banther, just to let you know that after that, I talked to the, to that director up there.
Yeah.
Uh, I asked her that if I can, if I can get an appointment to see the governor.
Mm-hmm.
And she was saying that it would be more wise to wait to see who's actually going to be the manager of the Economic Development Program, and then that's what I'm going to do.
Well, I would encourage you, as much as you feel comfortable, to keep on asking for one. I think you're fully entitled to.
Yeah.
And I think you, you know, should. So, as much as you feel comfortable and want to, I would support you.
I don't have a problem talking to him. We're going up there and seeing him first.
Good, good, good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta.
Um, I just echo what Vice Mayor said here. We need to be persistent and just keep on doing what we're doing and fight the fight. This is a very important project to our community. And again, sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind, so maybe if we can send either the mayor up there or city manager, Karen Lemons, rotate, send us different people in there, but be persistent. Go up once a month if we have to. I don't know if that, I think that would be sufficient enough, but, yeah, like I said, out of sight, out of mind, and just show them how much we need this project. But thank you for fighting for us and, you know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we would qualify for that economic development.
Well, they, we sent them the package up there. She's, they reviewing it, and we're going to know more when they assign someone for the, you know, for the program. Once we find out who the person is, then I will be talking to that person directly. But, yes, we constantly put pressure on. I wouldn't have to let it go, that's for sure. Yeah. I think Governor Scott recognizes my number and automatically gives it to someone. So, no problem there. Commissioner Carr?
I'll just echo some of the same comments that the other commissioners have made. To me, it's mind-boggling that we've got a town that has affected so much and an economy that's affected so much by the river and the importance of the river. So, I would also just encourage the residents and citizens of Tarpon Springs to continue to reach out to these elected officials. I also reached out to the county commissioners and administrator, and they're sending some notes also up to the governor's office, based on what I said, too. It just shows the importance of although we are a city within the state, we still have to lobby for money for the state to spend the money here. When I looked at the budget and you see the amount of money that's spent in projects throughout the state, it's kind of a head-scratcher to ask, why are we paying for some of the projects that we're paying for out of our budget, when you see the state paying for a lot of these things? So, it is a effort that I think that we do have to lobby ourselves for. So, thanks for everything you've done, Mayor, and the communications to the governor's office.
Just to let you know that the Panellus County Commission, they're right behind us, Commissioner Long, who's the chairperson, is sending a letter to the governor as well. So, yeah, we have their support as well. And thank you. We're now going to the public comments. Yes, please come to the podium. If you state your name and your address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Posner, twelve fifty-nine Wendy Bay Shoal in Tarpon Springs. And I would like to say that this morning, I was at a meeting with a staffer from Gus Billy Racus's office. We're working on getting him on the, on the list to become a congressman again in two thousand eighteen. And she mentioned, we mentioned the Anclot River project and how it'd been turned down, and she told me that Gus is going to be looking at federal funding for us. He's going to be doing some exploring federally for us. So, that's, that was kind of calming to me. But another question to you is, what can we do as a community to let the governor and put pressure on our government to help us? What, can we sign petitions? Can we have meetings? How do we get the word out? Because obviously, people aren't aware of what's going on.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure, of course. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that, by the way. The congressman's efforts are going to be crucial. It's kind of been a tiered system, right? So, the city put forth, I believe, achieved thirty to forty thousand for the impact study and staff time to get our ducks in a row for that. The county provided us about three hundred thousand dollars for our permits. So, the state was supposedly going to give us about nine hundred thousand dollars for the spoil site. Then that would set us up to get in the Army Corps budget, which is what the congressman needs to do for the actual dredge itself. That, and that really is the big deal, right? That's going to be the big, big push. So, we all need to be, as I mentioned, we all need to keep reaching out to Spraws' office and Jack's office for the money from the state for the spoil site. But the big picture, I think I mentioned this in my memo, that we can't lose sight of is exactly what you said up there, is continue to encourage and help Gus to lobby the Army Corps that were in their budget for dredging. Because we could have our permits ready, our spoil site ready, but if we don't get in the Army Corps' budget, the dredge doesn't happen. So, that's where it is on the federal level, and where, and where that's where we need to help the congressman. But petitions and so forth, I mean, anything's better than nothing, but I just think persistent, respectful, and I can't emphasize respectful enough, respectful contact with all of our representatives is the best thing you can do. Yeah, absolutely. Letters, yes. Absolutely, letters.
Directly to the governor? Thank you very much. Any other comment? Any other comment? Here none? Well, thank you very much. We are now going to the item number two, which is another presentation for the general fund update, fiscal year two thousand seventeen and budget overview two thousand eighteen.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Tonight, we have the general fund update as of through April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and the budget fiscal year two thousand eighteen, a brief overview. And as of April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, we're fifty-eight percent through the year. The total budget for the general fund, which is the largest fund of the city, is twenty-three point three million. Revenues at the end of April are fifteen point one million. At sixty-five percent, we've received, and as mentioned below, most of, why we're over fifty-eight percent is because property taxes. We receive, like, a We receive, uh, like at the end of April, we've received ninety-four percent of the property tax revenues as of the end of April. Expenditures thirteen point seven million, about fifty-nine percent. We're one percent over the fifty-eight percent through the end of April, but most of that, as mentioned down below, is, uh, we've had some expenditures, a cemetery land purchase. And within some departments, we've had some vacation sellbacks, especially during December, we offer the vacation sellback. So like I said, we had the fifteen point one million of revenues, thirteen point seven million of expenditures for a difference of one point four million. Now, that's, that's a nice number at the end of April, but by the end of the year, those expenditures are gonna creep up and be pretty close to the revenues, pretty, pretty even with them, maybe a little bit over. Uh, this graph is showing the general fund revenues expenditures as of April thirtieth for the previous five years. The, the blue graphs, the blue bar, I'm sorry, is the revenues, and the oranges-colored bar is the expenditures. And as you can see at this time every year, we're between revenues are, uh, between one point three and one point six over the expenditures. And, uh, revenues at the end of April thirtieth, we had the fifteen point one million, as mentioned before. It's an increase of four hundred and fifty-six thousand nine eighty-seven over fiscal year two thousand sixteen at April thirtieth. And the majority of the increase is four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars due to property taxes, and which the taxable values of properties increased six point four percent this year. Now, I like to always look at all the revenues in the general fund, there's like a hundred and fifty line items of revenues, but all, especially the top ten revenues, and what I've got here is a budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, actuals through April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and then our projection through the end of two thousand seventeen. And on our far right, whether we're gonna be over or under budget. And as, starting with the property taxes at top, we're gonna come in on budget, and maybe come over a little about nine million, nine thousand. I wish it was nine million, but nine thousand. Utility tax electric, about nine thousand. Uh, one of the big ones has been giving me a little heartburn the last year or so, and I, I told some other cities, is the electric franchise fee. And, and talks with other cities and, uh, and with Duke Energy, they've had two rate decreases during the last year, which is contributed a lot to that a hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is in yellow there, of decreases in, um, electric franchise fee. But, a- a- and maybe they've already increased the rates, but I know I just looked at today's receipt and one from last month, and for the first time in a year, our revenues for the electric fan- franchise fee increased. So I might get a hold of our rep and see if, maybe they've already increased the rates for the, um, on the Duke Energy franchise fees. Half-cent sales tax going down about twenty-one thousand. You know, that's our estimate, but I, like I say, I just looked at this month's receipt we got this month, and it's, it's over what we got last year, so that, I might be a little bit too conservative there. EMS fees are per the contract at the, uh, one point four, one million four hundred twenty-eight thousand. Inter-fund transfers are what are budgeted. Communication service tax, um, this is one that's been gradually decreasing, as mentioned down on the bottom there, since two thousand five, when the, the peak year was one million two hundred and forty-nine thousand five twenty-two. It's gradually decreased every year, so we're seeing another decrease this year of that thirty-seven thousand, it's in yellow there. A, a lot of the explanation is a lot of people are just getting rid of their landlines and, uh, and just causing that decrease. Uh, revenue share- sharing state sales tax, um, going down thirteen thousand, but I'm hoping it won't go down thirteen. We usually, the fiscal year for the state ends June thirtieth. And then they come back and do an audit, and we get like an extra payment in August. So I'm hoping that, you know, we might not have a decrease there, but so far conservatively, I've put in a, a negative thirteen thousand there. And then water utility tax with the water sales have increased, we've got about fifty thousand plus there. And fire fees are per the contract at the four hundred and two thousand. And if the top ten revenues weren't enough, I, I thought I'd throw in the next ten revenues, no, I'm not gonna go through a hun- a hundred and fifty, but, but hospitals, the hospital lease, it's in the same thing with the budget, the actual through the year, the projection and over-under. Hospital is per the lease. Uh, building permits have been coming in nicely with all the, I know the work in the building department doing with all the new construction, so might be go over by thirty-nine thousand. Interest earnings aren't, don't think are gonna come up to projection. Uh, uh, library co-op, that's money from the county. Uh, we budgeted one ninety-five, it looks like we're only gonna get a hundred and seventy-eight thousand this year. Local business taxes possibly will decrease. School resource officers per the contract. Code enforcement, this is another one that sort of drives me nuts sometimes, cause it's always so erratic. Like last year, like I see, we've only received eleven thousand so far this year. Uh, last year, we got a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, but it was, we had two or three claims that were thirty, forty thousand dollars each that put us over budget. And then utility tax and franchise fees on na- on natural gas, hopefully will come in about seven thousand over budget each. And then court fines, another erratic one. We, we've only gotten about twenty-five thousand, uh, so far this year. And just to point out, with, like, on the, um, the top ten revenues, and it, the, the net decrease is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand on, on those top ten revenues, but most of it's because of that franchise fee electric. And then on that next ten, we're down about eighty-two thousand, mostly because of the code enforcement and court fines. And just trying to mention here, with the franchise fee is electric, a couple months ago, I got with other cities, just to find out, you know, is everybody in the same boat? But they, everybody was in the same boat, their franchise fees are down. And that's when I got a hit of Duke Energy and found out they've had two rate decreases the past year. Uh, Duke sales or revenues went down four point four percent from two thousand fifteen to sixteen. Duke sales are down eight point five nine percent in two thousand seventeen through March. Uh, and Duke plans on rate increases this next year, but talked to the rep last year, and she's not really sure if they are or not, but like I said, this, when I saw the last two receipts, maybe they already did it, and that, she just wasn't sure of that. And then just another side note, the thirty-year franchise agreement with the city expires September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. Then if the city wants, you know, they have to redo the agreement, or, and if they want, they could a- adjust the rate if possible. And this graph is the general fund again, expenditures by category for the last five years through April thirtieth. I had the blue gar- the blue bar is showing personnel expenses. As you see, increasing gradually over the five years, mostly salary increases. Um, orange bars are the operating expenses going from two point seven million to three million in two thousand seventeen. Uh, capital expenses, the gray bars, sort of, you know, depending on what capital expenditures are budgeted. In two thousand fifteen, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, that was mostly, we used, had some nursing home money that we sold, and we were using it towards that. And in two thousand seventeen, the one million fifty thousand, that is money that's been being spent. We've had money for the, um, the land purchase at the cemetery and the exterior of this building. Part of the exterior of this building is being funded by the general fund and the penny fund. And the expenditures year-to-date through April thirtieth for this current year were thirteen point seven million. It's an increase of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand over last year. Personnel was just an increase of forty-five thousand, but there was a mix of salaries being up two hundred and three thousand, retirement down two hundred and forty-six thousand, cause we had some decreases on that. And health, dental insurance and workers' comp down twenty-three thou- uh, I'm sorry, up twenty-three thousand and thirty-five thousand. Operating expenses about plus hundred and sixty-four thousand, and there wa- wasn't nothing really in particular. It was like there was across-the-board increases, all across-the-board between ten, twenty thousand. Uh, but the big increase it costs, the seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, was land purchase at the cemetery, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and city hall exterior improvements that have been expensed to the general fund of three hundred and ninety thousand. Um, this is a slide, I always love to try to project the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and between, you know, you have a hundred and fifty lines of revenues and about a thousand lines of expenditure items, but uh, the unassigned fund balance at the end of last year was eight million eight hundred and twenty thousand four forty-three. Uh, looking at the revenues, the slide before, where the top ten revenues, we had the decrease, you know, projected of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand decrease. Hopefully, it's not that much. Then those next ten revenues, a decrease eighty-two, uh, close to eighty-three thousand. Inter-fund transfer adjustment for administrative fees. Enterprise funds transfer money to the general fund for, to cover administrative fee costs. The allocation had not been looked at since two thousand nine, so I went back last month and tried to figure out, using the same methodology and formulate it, and came up that really the, the enterprise funds need to contribute about another hundred and seventy-seven thousand uh, to the general fund. And this is probably an allocation that should be looked at each year, instead of waiting from two thousand nine to do it now. And then we had a grant receipt for landscaping on alternate nineteen that we didn't budget for. So where there was zero revenue adjustments, and for the expenditures for the departments, they, the departments do a good job of watching their departments. They're all at like fifty-eight percent, they monitor them pretty good. And roughly, I'm sa- I'm looking at the projected unassigned fund balance, uh, keeping about the same at the eight million eight hundred and twenty thousand at the end of this year. And the slide we always look at here is the history of the unassigned fund balance for the last ten years. As you can see, in two thousand eight, we were at eight point seven million. It started going up a little bit and then going down, but for the last four years, for two thousand fourteen through su- two thousand seventeen, we're hanging right in there at eight point eight million. Uh, this slide is also dealing with the unassigned fund balance. So what it's showing in the blue bars is the unassigned fund balance, uh, for the last four years, plu- plus the projection of the eight point two million for, uh, I'm sorry, eight point eight million for two thousand seventeen. But the orange bars are the twenty percent minimum fund balance requirement per our fund balance policy. So you can see, each year, we've got, you know, a little over, between four point two, four point six million each year, cushioned between what we're required to have and what we do have at the eight point eight million. And my, I had like five slides on the budget, but I didn't know if you wanted to, any questions on the general fund before I just went into the budget, or just go right in?
Just go ahead and finish the whole thing.
Okay. Well, as you know, you got some books on your, on your daisies there, I know you probably love them, they're three inches, they've got three hundred and forty-one pages of budget items there, um. I know you'd be looking at that tonight, reading that and stuff, but we also, I also, I'm sorry, I also have electronic copies. I'm ready to send you and stuff if you'd like those, and I can take those back if you really don't want those books there, but. And in there is also an executive summary we started last year, which tries to go through and, um, and, well, I think I've got a slide on that, but tries to summarize all the information in here by summary for revenues, expenditures by type, by function, and some other, um, highlights. And like I say, the budget document, the three-ring binder has detail on all funds, you know, it's got everything you wanna know in there on the budget. You know, sorted by fund, revenues, expenditures, justification for each line item payroll. The executive summary summarizes all the accounts that are in the three-ring binder by total city, the general fund and water and sewer fund. It also has more information on, uh, the budget process, the objectives, goals, policies, uh, some information on personnel, property values and millage rate, the debt, which we only have the water plant debt, and the capital improvement program. Uh, the process to date, you know, it's a long process. It starts back in March, the departments are entering their budgets, and then finance compiles the budget request, projects revenues, balances the funds, and produces this budget document in April. The budget was submitted to the city manager and budget advisory committee in May of two thousand seventeen. The city manager has met with the department heads, the budget advisory committee has met with every department. And just a summary of some of the numbers here, the total city proposed budget for two thousand eighteen is fifty-five million four hundred and forty-two thousand four forty-five. It's an increase of two hundred and ten thousand eight fifty-four over the previous year budget, or point three eight percent. And the five largest funds are the general fund at twenty-three point six million, the water and sewer fund at fifteen point eight, sanitation fund at four point eight, the penny fund at two point six, the stormwater fund at two point four, for a total of about forty-nine million. And those five funds make up like eighty-nine percent of the fifty-five million dollar budget. And down below, just the capital improvement program, things that are designated for capital, major capital projects, a seven point five million. And capital outlay, that's minor capital outlay, trucks, vehicles, equipment, that's, uh, one, one million three hundred and eighty-eight thousand for eight million nine hundred and eleven thousand of capital outlay. And the, what's in the budget book, we have some assumptions, all funds are in balance. The general fund's balanced without using any unassigned fund balance. Property values are increased at seven point five percent. They're really, the, they gave us an estimate June first, a seven point nine eight percent, but we're being a little bit conservative here. Uh, the property tax revenue increase based on that is five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand one twenty-nine is in the general fund, and twenty-one thousand six eighty-seven, that increase goes to the CRA fund. Uh, salary increase is funded at three point five percent, for a total cost of six hundred and thirty thousand. Health, dental, life insurance, we've budgeted a ten percent increase, we don't know what it'll finally be, but that's a cost of three hundred and ten thousand. Workers' comp, we've budgeted eight percent, an increase of thirty-two thousand. Property insurance, we do a fifteen percent increase, comes about eighty, almost eighty-one thousand. Retirement accounts funded at the actuary requirement, the police is at eight point one four percent. It went down from eight point seven nine, a decrease of twenty-six thousand. Fire goes by dollar amounts from their actuaries, so it's gone, uh, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand from seven oh nine, so it's a increase of nineteen thousand. And general fund employees is just at the eight point seven percent. The police and fire defined benefit plans, uh, as you probably know, the general employees is a defined contribution. And the budget process going forward, July eleventh at that meeting, the, the DR four twenty will be on the agenda. That's just giving the city manager approval to sign the DR four twenty, which goes back, and it's setting the millage rate that you're proposing. It also sets the date of the first public hearing. August third is the first budget workshop that's scheduled, August tenth, the second budget workshop if necessary, and September sixth is the first public hearing on the tentative millage and budget. And September nineteenth, the second and final public hearing, and then after that, I'm done with the budget for a while. And that's it, I had.
Question. Stay, thank you for the presentation, and we'll thank you for the good work that you do. I have a question to ask you, on the very, very first page, uh, the slides on our number, but if you go at the very, very beginning.
First slide, or?
Yeah, keep, keep going, keep going.
Something I also didn't, I was gonna say, something I forgot to mention, and just so you know, personnel expenses in the general fund are like seventy percent of the expenses of the general fund there. Sorry, forgot to mention that.
The, the question that I, I would like to ask is at the, at the very, very beginning of the presentation, the slides on that number, but, um, there where you say that the revenue, uh, is fifteen point one million?
Yes.
Up to date? And the expenditures of thirteen point seven, difference of, uh, one point three million. But you also say that we still have the, uh, cemetery, uh, plot to pay for it, uh, property to pay for, also the, uh, buy, buy back the vacation time?
Yes.
Uh, are we expecting to have any surplus now that we have one point three million dollars plus?
Well, that says April thirtieth right now, by the end of.
Early to say that?
Pardon me?
Is it too early?
Yes, by the end of, that's why I was trying to say, eh, this is nice where we have a one point four million surplus. By the end of the year, though, like the one that had, had the graphs with the bars, the expenditures are gonna come up and probably equal the revenues that are coming in.
The, uh, the cemetery, uh, property, doesn't come out of the cemetery fund?
Cemetery, within the general fund, but it's a cemetery perpetual care fund. We reserve it off separately, it's about, currently about two point one million in there at the end of last year. This, this land purchase will be taken out of that, um, perpetual care fund.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you count the pages, page number six, you, you made a comment about, uh, the, uh, the Duke, uh, electric company, uh, thirty-year franchise agreement will be expired in two thousand twenty. Uh, and you're suggesting that we negotiate and hopefully we get more than six percent if possible. Do we know what the other cities are getting?
Everybody is still at six percent.
Still the same?
Yeah. Even the, the, I mean, when I was talking to our Duke rep, she sort of said, well, I'm not sure if you can increase it over six percent, but she was gonna check. But I know statewide, I have, we have a local listserv of all our finance people, and some cities and other counties had a higher rate, but maybe we'll try to find that out. I've got a conference next week, I was gonna query some of our other cities and see what they're, if they're planning on increasing their rate.
Uh, I have a couple of comments to make in regards to, uh, two thousand and two proposed budget. It's encouraging that the property value is going to be increased seven point five percent next year. And it was six this year, and it's gonna be seven point five next year.
Yes, it's, with, that's our conservative estimate, uh, we got the estimate of really seven point nine eight. And we'll, we'll find out July first, on July first, we'll get the certified preliminary estimate on July first. And that's what, at the next meeting on July eleventh, that'll have what the, uh, actual amount of taxable value is and what the increase is. This, the seven point five is based on the June. This, the seven point five is based on the June first estimate they sent out to us.
Thank you. And this is the second year in a row that we're gonna have a truth balance budget without using any of the surplus money.
Yes.
Thank you. And-
Good answer.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Licorice, yourself, your staff, all the employees of the city, the city employees, and also the budget advisory committee for the work that you guys did, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Banther.
Yes, thank you, and, and, uh, thank you, Ron, for doing these quarterly updates. Now, I, I think it really helps and the guidance and discussion of this, and it helps us understand things better for our budget hearings this summer. I know we lowered the tax rate a very, very small amount this past year. Have we realized that yet, or, or, and if not, when, 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 when do we realize that?
Well, as, as part of the monies we're receiving, it went from five point four five to five point four two, so we're, it's about a forty-five thousand dollar revenue decrease to the city.
But, 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 like you said, we're still showing more than last year.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that was my main question, thank you on that. We haven't frozen the lease yet on the hospital, right, because that's until they're CO'd, correct?
Yes, starting in two thousand eighteen, that's when we're required to take the amount that they're billed, over three hundred thousand, and we're gonna reserve it off. And for the next five years or whatever, I think it's up to a certain year, five years from now, they get it done, then we'll take that reserve that's built up and then pay them for them, if they get the hospital ER room done by the allotted time.
So we're, we're still collecting the money, but we're saving that difference for them?
Yes, we're still gonna require, we're still gonna bill them the full amount, I think next year is three hundred and forty-nine thousand, we're gonna take that forty-nine thousand at next year and reserve it off.
Okay. All right. And I saw the code enforcement, but I think that's self-explanatory, it just depends on the environment and the means, there's not really a rhyme or reason. I saw the increase in health insurance, I would ask again, like I do every year, that we go out to bid for our health insurance, I believe it's our, it's our largest expenditure outside of payroll, and I'd like to see us go out to bid for that this year. Quarter League might still be the, the best deal in town, but I think it just, it's just sound fiscal policy for one of your major line items that we go out to bid for that, especially when it, when it keeps increasing. As far as the communications tax or the, or the, or the franchise tax, with, with that, with having less phones, and then you said with the one with Duke Energy, we have some input on, if we, if we lobby to increase that rate, is that effectively us taxing people more? Or, or, or how does that work directly?
Yes, it's a franchise agreement based on, Duke Energy has to pay it, but obviously they pass it on to the consumers.
Okay, so I would just like us, you know, if we negotiate that or whatever, just be be, to be mindful of that, I think we'd all wanna be in the mid-range, like, like you said, of what people are doing, I certainly don't wanna be charging less, but I don't wanna be the one charging, charging more, so be in the mid-range. So thank, thank you very much for this update.
Sure.
Commissioner K.
Thank you, Ron, I just wanna thank you for, for these updates, this is so helpful to all of us, and you're doing an outstanding job, really do appreciate it. And I wanna thank our budget advisory board and all our directors of our departments for, you know, bringing their ideas together, their numbers together to the city manager and to you and crunching numbers and putting, you know, getting this budget ready for us, 'cause I cannot wait to go through this book over the summer. But this little, little book that you put together to summarize is-
We call it the executive summary.
Yeah, it's, it's a great help, I mean, I do go page by page, but this is a great help as well, and, and thank you for that, I do appreciate it. I have to agree with Vice Mayor Banther on the health insurance, I, I think I might wanna see us go out to bid this year. I don't think, well, I think only once or twice since two thousand eight that I've been sitting up here, we went out to bid, and then we came across the Florida League of Cities, and, and that's, we've been going through them since, so it might be time for us to, just to, why not? You know, we owe it to the city, to the residents to save as much money as we can. And I see that our revenues is, is increasing for property values, I mean, it's good for us for income, I mean, you know, it also means that we could be paying more taxes as an, as an individual because our values are going up, but it's good for my business that I'm in too, so, in the mortgage business, so it just means, you know, more homes are selling and better, you know, but at a higher rate. But, you know, I, I wanna thank you for, oh, I did have another question, it's about Duke Energy. So if more people use solar, do you think that our rates would go up from Duke Energy? Would that have an effect on it?
I got the feeling if you had a lot of people using solar, yeah, what the city receives would go down, the revenues.
Revenues would go down, right, okay. 'Cause I, I see that happening in the near future here, so we need to prepare for that as well. But again, thank you and for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just forgot what thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sorry, I, I, though, though I forgot this, I think it's kind of the most important. In the next update you have for us, could you prepare an analysis of this, what Tallahassee passed, I guess we're all gonna be voting on it, the extra homestead exemption, that on surface sounds great, that we're all gonna get less, we're all, we're all gonna be paying less, less in property taxes. I'm just thinking for myself, that's Tallahassee passing the tax burden onto cities, but I, I would like to show for the record, at least now, in, in your analysis, what you would estimate, if that passes, our loss of revenue would be, what, what we'd have to increase the millage rate to make up for that loss of rep?
It's four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and you'd have to increase the millage rate about a quarter mil from five point four two to five point seven seven, I think it is.
Now, is that being voted on, is that for this fall or is that for the general election?
November two thousand eighteen it gets voted on.
I think we need to, and I, I'm, I'm only including you because you're, you're, you're our finance guy, obviously, but we really have to stay on top of that, because who doesn't like a break in their property taxes? But it's not gonna effectively be one, because we, we will have an immediate deficit that we, that we have to cure. And having a degree in economics, I, I understand the trickle-down effect of, well, more homes will be sold, more money, more tax revenue, et cetera, but that's realized three, four, five years down the road, best-case scenario. We would have an immediate loss of revenue, we, we, that, that we, that we, we, we would have to cover, so I think we just need to keep that on our forefront, going in the future, and make sure we're educating our, 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 our residents on that in a way that is appropriate for us too, so thank you.
Actually, what are we doing is we shifting taxes.
That's all it is.
That's all we do.
Mayor, do you mind if I have a comment?
Of course.
Ron, does that include the EMS component, loss of revenue from the county, that four seventy-two?
No. Are you talking about the EMS contract or something?
Yeah, the, the money that we get from the county for EMS, is that also included in the four seventy-two?
No.
How, how much loss is that?
I don't have that number, I, like I say, I think the EMS is gonna, EMS is-
Homestead exemption?
I would, I would think it would affect them, 'cause they do base EMS on their own millage rate, so yes, I mean, based on whatever the contract is, I know the contract for EMS is increasing, I think it is a three percent this next year, so yes, they do have their own separate millage rate, and it would affect them, but I don't have the dollar amount.
I think our contract expires in two thousand twenty, I'm on that. Also, this is set to kick in in fiscal year two thousand twenty, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner K.
Yeah, that's okay, most of my questions already asked. Thank you for presenting. A couple of things I wanted to echo Vice Mayor mentioned about the franchise fee from Duke Energy, that is something that we all pay as residents directly, it's, it's passed straight through to us, so even if we increase it, it's an additional tax from the residents. And then the, what Vice Mayor also brought up with the, the voting on the millage rate decrease, I was gonna recommend looking at that, how's it gonna be built in, in the future years, just to echo what he said also. But I did have one question, and I heard that we haven't dipped into the reserve in the past couple of years. Why is it level over the past two years based on your chart? It shouldn't have gone up at some, is it like an interest-bearing account at all, or where is that at right now?
Well, all the, all the money is in the, you know, in the checking account or save at public funds, money market, and we have some other federal instruments also.
Okay, I, I was just curious, because even if we get like one percent, it's eighty thousand dollars that we'd get for the reserve funds, so I don't know if that's an option for us to look at further.
Well, when the, it's, when the unassigned, to get to the unassigned fund balances, you're taking the revenue, I don't wanna go into too much detail, you're taking-
Together.
-the revenues for the year, the expenditures, but there's also within the fund balance of the general fund about ten other items, so when I'm closing out the fund to get to that unassigned, I'm, I'm recalculating these other buckets of money before I get to the final unassigned fund balance, but if you want, I can go over that with you.
We'll spend some time this summer, I'm, I'm sure.
Okay.
Thank you for presenting stuff.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
We are now going to the public comments on this item.
Here to Lax five one four Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Ron, that was very informative and educational, I think, to our residents here, and it shows the stability we've been able to maintain over all these years, where we went through the oh eight, oh nine crunch, and then stabilized, and then we come out pretty much where we went in. However, there was a little thing in there, and I'm glad Susan, Miss Commissioner, Michio Slattery-Kitty, I'm not sure which one to use, sorry, Sue, brought up a good point about the solar. As more and more people go to solar, and if Duke's not, and, and you gotta realize, this is all, I mean, the big energy companies aren't wanting to get into solar until they can make money off of it. So, how can we make money off of it? Why not? September twenty twenty is when the contract with Duke expires. How about let's being, I mean, this just came to my head a moment ago, I mean, we've talked about it before, but the city of Gainesville has their own municipal electric company. All right? So we've got three years possibly to look at that and see how we could set it up ourselves. Now, how do they do it? They generate some of their own power, if you look at their partnership with the University of Florida, they've got a cellulosic conversion plant to generate energy, and then, you know, most electrics buy energy from somewhere else, but where else would we have a chance? That we here in Tarpon Springs have a potential. We've got a stuffer site out there sitting vacant. We could lease it, purchase it, eminent domain it, whatever you want, put our solar fields there, generate our own electricity, we sell that to the residents. Then you could lower your utility tax, 'cause you're gonna be generating the electricity yourself for purchasing it, you can charge administrative fees, but you don't have to tax your own residents on a utility that's generating their own electricity. We can cut out Duke. We can do our part in climate change. Think about it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? We hear none? Thank you, Mr. Herrick. We now go to the item number three, cemetery irrigation project. Mr. Paul Smith will do the presentation.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and I'm pleased to introduce this presentation to you. This is a showcase presentation of a project we've done in-house with the city, we're very proud of the staff that went out and got trained to perform this project, the performance on the project and the results and cost savings that go with it. I toured the project with City Manager Licorice, and he agreed this is something he wanted to present to you all. So with that, I'd like to introduce some folks here. The presenter is going to be our chief utility mechanic, Francisco Pavez, he's standing here to my left, he was also the project manager, and also in the audience, we have Justin Economos, he's a utility mechanic, and we also have Michael Sarukas, utility mechanic. And we appreciate them coming tonight on their time to, to see this presentation, they were an important part of getting this project done, and I'm very proud of what they've done. And with that, Francisco, are you about ready to launch that?
Oh, I'm ready.
Okay. Well, while he's finalizing his preparation there, I'll just say a little more. The cemetery, an irrigation system properly functioning is the foundation of having a healthy turf, an attractive ground, something that we believe we owe to the community to respect those that have passed before us. It's a perpetual care facility, it's one that we take care of from here on out, and some of the technology we're able to use, there's been quite some development in irrigation systems over the years. In the old days, it was a series of spaghetti of wires, and now it's gone to what they call a two-wire system, which Francisco will talk a little bit about here, but these guys work with our lift stations and our SCADA, so they were the perfect group to work on this, they're the technology guys that we have in our department, and they really took to this. They went to specialized rainbird training to learn about the system, and then applied what they learned in the field. And I can tell you that if we had contracted this work out, something we've learned over the years is if you don't really know the details of the job, in other words, a whole bunch of buried stuff underground that isn't over thirty or forty years entirely mapped, you're looking at a lot of change orders that would result in a very expensive project. So by having total control of it in-house, we're able to get to the bottom of it, own it, and successfully complete it. So with that, thank you, and I have to turn it over.
Thank you, Paul, good evening, Board and Mayor. We looked at this project together, and we had essentially a vision, that we wanted to make the city of Tarpon Springs its own service, and we kind of tried to explain it with this image where we can see the cemetery's dark, and in the center we actually have water. The, we had this vision, and we, thanks to the help with Paul, we tried to make it a reality. So, I wanna talk about a little bit of what we had before. From the history of the cemetery, we had a steel pipe system, which was at the beginning a very good system, but as metal is in the ground for years, it starts rusting, and it's very hard to repair. Later on, there was another system installed with PVC pipes. The problem with that was that it was poorly installed, and the technology at the time wasn't very up to par with what we needed, especially on a commercial system. And then we came up with a newer system that had a better controls, but it was multiple controls, you didn't have centralized control, and honestly, all of them were poorly implemented without a master plan, no idea of congruency. So that led us to a challenge, we needed a system that was autonomous, simple, reliable, something that can serve many locations, and anytime of day, anytime we want it, we just press a button and make it happen. Needed to be reliable, because if we don't have any water, we can't grow grass and make it pretty for everybody to be there. Efficient, we have this ability to implement the system ourselves and save money, lots of it, and that led us to the last point, where we wanted to have a smart system, something that will work for us as well as us working for it. And that was, as Paul mentioned, the two-wire system. That's the beauty about the two-wire system, is that if you can see on the right, before you had hundreds of wires to run a zone to water the park, or, I'm sorry, the cemetery. And we used the new system to come up with two wires, as the name calls it, which aids in diagnosing, diagnosis, and in-house repairs. The two-wire also makes it possible to increase the size, so as we're getting more property, maybe we can implement it down the road, and it makes diagnosing very, very easy. So here's our in-house process, Paul brought it up to us as an idea, and we said yes, and we started with training, we went to training, we spent a week or so in the south of Florida, getting trained on the best system that we can install. We spent weeks evaluating it, and we actually came up with a two-wire system. Then we implemented design, there was a system already in the ground that we had to overcome, we just wanted to do a central nervous system change, where we could control what was already on the ground without having to change too much. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case. Then we began installation, is when we found our issues, and we started to optimize the system, which comes down on a later slide, and we gave it to the cemetery staff to manage. So they were trained- So they were trained, and they learned the process as it was being installed, which is great, and something we don't get when we have a contractor. So the project turned to, turned to be a little bit harder than it actually was. We came up with this design. We had to change the piping, and we came up with a lot of issues, and things that were in the ground, we did not foresee. We ended up having to hand dig five thousand feet of trench. We couldn't use a trencher, because there's graves, and there's other piping that we could have actually hit, so hand digging was the only way possible. We installed four thousand feet of wire, which was placed in a conduit to keep it safe from future diggings, because this is an active dig site. And five to six hundred feet of pipe were actually repaired. That was something we did not foresee. We did not think that it was that bad in the ground. We replaced the valves with new valves that actually are reclaim proof, so they will last a long time. And we also implemented a nine-ground grid system, which will keep us from getting lightning strikes, and hopefully keep our system safe throughout the storms, since we get over fourteen thousand lightning strikes a year here in Florida. And here's some of the show and tell. On the left, you see the before, and obviously the after on the right. This was denoted over fifty sites in, on the cemetery property, and we can see examples of poor distribution, pipes making turns that don't need to have, and actually, old Here's one of my favorites. On the left, we have nine elbows at ninety degrees to get the flow on the pipe. This is pretty impressive, because if you start with, let's say, ten gallons per minute, after nine of those, you're probably getting about one gallon per minute coming out, and we've actually improved that over fifty sites in that cemetery. And on the left, we have our control systems. So you have to run around from one side to the other one, to turn one clock, and then turn the other one on, and hopefully it will work. If not, you have to actually assign times to each zone itself. Now, you have the ability to do it all at once, even with the ability to control it through any smartphone, so staff has that ability as well. And here's some of our conclusions. We've saved over a hundred thousand dollars by taking this project ourselves, and one of the words that comes to mind when I'm thinking about it is change order. We had no change orders, because everything was done here. We save time, and we train staff. They are able to troubleshoot the system, and they know where everything goes. Hydraulics was a side effect. We didn't know it was this bad, and we have improved the flow of water significantly. This helps us conserve resources and implement them elsewhere. Full automation, the system runs without having to be babysat, and the irrigation is also reduced by fifty percent, so staff doesn't have to monitor or start irrigating at times that are not beneficial for the turf. Quality of construction, we spec all the, all the components that were going on the ground, therefore, we know that they're gonna last, and we know where to get new ones for replacement. And the system is also smart. It can diagnose itself, learn, find leaks, and it will walk you right where the leaks are. It's actually very useful for staff to save time and conserve resources. And I would like to say thank you to our city manager, Paul Smith, Public Service Director, Raymond Page, our utility superintendent. I'm there, obviously, for the presentation. Justin Economos, Tech One, he took a huge part of this project, us management on the field. Michael Sorukas, great part of this project as well. David Witowski for putting up with us through the time we were at his cemetery. He was having to deal with all the digging and keeping up with the turf as well. Renee Hudson, our cemetery assistant operator, she now knows the system inside and out, and can diagnose it and work it very well, as well as Michael Keaton, our cemetery labor, who's also, was there through this process, and now knows the cemetery irrigation very well. Our city, City of Tarpon Springs Water Division helped us with a lot of water connections that were above our ability to perform, and I would also like to say special thanks to Sean Plumlee and Alex Steely, which worked for our tech staff, and were very helpful with the labor throughout this four-month period. That's about sum set up, and if you have any questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation, and our cemetery looks really nice, and with this irrigation, will look even nicer. I'd like to thank all the employees that got involved, working on this project, and doing the project in-house will save a lot of money, plus you have the expertise to maintain it. But, Mr. Smith, do we have a program in place where we can recognize employees for performing above their responsibilities?
Yes, we do, several ways. One of them is we have a policy ten, which actually looks for certification opportunities for employees, and when they go and get these certifications that are of mutual benefit to them and the city, we recognize them with a percent pay increase. So it's a permanent increase to their pay, and a skill that helps them develop in their careers, and also the city directly, like with this project.
For doing a project like this, which is not a usual thing, it happens probably once in a lifetime, you don't replace an irrigation that often, I like to see the employees to be recognized, especially to be recognized if we invite them over here, and just to say thank you, and let everybody know the work that they do. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner K.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, recognizing that our system was not the best. I just have one question. When it says, "responds to weather changes," so if it's raining, does it not come on?
Yes, and it also has internet connection, where it will forecast the, sorry, it will forecast the area, so you can enter your SIP code, and it will know ahead of time. And you can look it up on your cellphone, it will tell you, hey, there's a front coming, we're considering not irrigating, but it lets you do the decision as well.
That's awesome.
Has email capabilities.
That's awesome, because, you know, so many of us have sprinkler systems, you know, in our neighborhoods, and it's pouring down rain, and some people's sprinklers are on, because, you know, you're not gonna run out there and turn whatever you do, I don't know what you do, reprogram it, but this is, that's a great, that alone, I'm totally impressed with, but thank you so much for this.
No problem.
Vice Mayor Panther.
Yes, thank you. You know, we have some of the most forward-thinking staff when it comes to things like this, and public works, and in any cemetery, I'm just very thankful that you all are thinking of these things, and I think it's definitely a great thing we do, and especially in the recent updates to the cemetery for the faithful departed, that we have a nice resting place in town. I think that's, that's very important. As far as your presentation, obviously, it's way above my pay grade. I mean, I can barely use my own sprinkler system, but I think it has all that's needed to provide the proper irrigation, and I appreciate all the technological, you know, aspects of it that I'm sure will save us money down the road, obviously. So I appreciate your work, and I agree with the mayor that when this is implemented, we should recognize all the staff and people that helped make this possible thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Paul, thanks for everything you guys do with your staff, and taking lead in this also. Just wanna echo again the comments that are made tonight. It's great to see an in-house project, and that's something that didn't have to go out to bid and then done, and to see the hundred thousand dollars in savings is huge for other projects that could be worked on throughout the city at a sooner pace, instead of postponing it until further years. So, thanks again for everything you've done.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Hear none? Thank you very much. We are now going to the item number four, which is the athletic field fee structure. Mr. Smith, you're the front center again.
Good evening, Paul Smith, again, Public Services Director, and this item is a great partnership with the Parks Recreation Advisory Board and city staff. I see this as a project that's an excellent example of how our advisory boards work with us, to advise us on things we can do to improve, in this case, parks and recreation. This is a program where I believe we also worked well with the leagues, keeping them involved in our recommendations as we went. I believe there were two, or maybe even three, opportunities for leagues to come and see this very presentation that we're giving you tonight, to give us their comments and their concerns. I'll just jump ahead by telling you, overall, the leagues embrace this. They do understand the need, and the fact that they are getting excellent facilities for very, very little cost. There was one comment from soccer, that they would prefer a different way to calculate the fee, but they understood our reasoning why, and said they would accept it, so hopefully that might head off any concerns you might have as I give you this presentation. I'd also like to recognize there are members of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in the audience. In fact, they're making up a good percentage of our audience tonight, and I thank them for being here, and I'll ask Jim Maurer, the vice chair, who's recently been elected as the chair of the Parks Rec Board, to identify them when he comes up in just a moment. So as far as the presentation, this just gives a background, I'll briefly go through this, an overview of what brought us to our recommendations to you tonight. This is a joint recommendation of the advisory board and city staff, which includes not only the Public Services Department, but the Public Works Department as well, since they're the ones that maintain the fields. Tom Funchen is in the audience, in case there's any questions related to his areas of the parks maintenance, the fields maintenance, that sort of thing. So with that, I'll briefly talk about our current challenges, what brought us to going over this, the summary of the costs, the solutions that we propose, a brief comparison of different area field structures, the estimated cost for the leagues, and our conclusions and recommendations. So our fields are very high quality. I think that's pretty widely known. They're in high demand. As a result, there's not a whole lot of availability for other uses, so that's something we're aware of, and we need to look at. Our maintenance costs continue to rise. The last estimate was somewhere around the hundred and seventy thousand per year range, but I'm confident that number's higher now. I think we've done a job of accounting for those expenses, but I think there's just some increases that aren't totally accounted for there. We have a general population of twenty-four thousand, paying basically through tax dollars for the benefit of about eleven hundred league members, many of which are non-residents. So it sets up a dynamic that we consider, we recommend you consider, an approach based on user fee on actual field usage time. And what this will do is allow the possibility for more availability, as the leagues review how much use they actually need, and also, it'll allow for a more balanced cost recovery. One other thing we note from an administrative end is our process for trying to verify the rosters for the leagues each season has become cumbersome. Many times, we're chasing after the leagues to get the proper number of attendees or participants, sometimes into the beginning of the season. So, this approach would solve that problem, because the schedules are already put together at the beginning, so if it's based on a league field use time on a schedule that's already submitted, it just avoids the whole roster issue. This is an overview of costs, but it shows you by field, also the, by type of expense, supplies, repairs, lights, staff time, irrigation supplies, pesticides, fertilizers, seed, labor, et cetera, and it totals up to that hundred and seventy thousand. The solutions I talked about already is the user fee type approach. I wanna emphasize here, we're really proposing a portion, a partial cost recovery. I think it calculates out to less than twenty-five percent of the actual cost, is what we're proposing to you as an initial fee. We explained this to the leagues, and I think they found that to be reasonable. So based on that calculation, we would propose a dollar per field per hour type approach. So if a league, you know, or different areas have multiple fields, so if they wanna use three fields for three hours, that would be three times three at the dollar per hour rate that we're proposing of two fifty per hour. In the past, we've only billed based on field lighting, and that itself was a partial recovery of the cost. We had no fee for the use of the field itself, and as you might imagine, that left us quite short on recovering expenses. One thing we also looked at is, we would propose to exempt the leagues from the recreation activity card requirements, so as to minimize those administrative requirements on the leagues and the city. We feel that if we're paying a usage fee, then we probably shouldn't also charge them for the recreation card fee for the field use. Now, if they were to go on to use other city facilities, which we hope they would with the recreation, then that would incur a fee appropriate for that use. Here's a comparison of the different field fee structures, and really, this is just to show that it's common for different local governments in areas to charge for their fields, per player, per season, or per hour. St. Petersburg's example there, you'll see, is totals two dollars and fifty cents per hour, which is the rate we're proposing to you tonight. Here's how that might impact the leagues. This was based on their actual field usage hours. This was reviewed with the leagues. That's the last column there, so it totals thirty-nine thousand dollars as proposed, based on their submitted schedules. I do believe that once that hourly rate is imposed, their schedules might go down in terms of the number of hours they're asking for, which would create less of a cost to them, and also some possible field availability time. In conclusion, the user fee approach, talking about recovering a portion of the maintenance costs, we're recommending two dollars and fifty cents per field per hour. It's a reasonable rate, and that would include the cost of the lighting, so they wouldn't be billed in addition to that for lighting, it'd just be a flat fee for all field use day or night. We would waiver that recreation activity card fee for league participants, for the field use part of that only, in recognition of those fees paid, and we would recommend to you that the effective date is September first, to give the leagues time to readjust for their upcoming seasons. So with that, I'm gonna ask Jim Maurer, the vice chair of the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, to come up. He's gonna give an overview of his thoughts, and at that point, we can answer any questions.
Mayor Alhousis, members of the board, city staff. My name is Jim Maurer, and I'm the chairman-elect at present time of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Thank you. I'm making the presentation for Celia Dubay, who is our current chairman, she was unable to attend tonight. We do have four other members of the board here, I'd like to introduce them, if I may. If you'll raise your hand when I call your name, Alice Morgan, Elizabeth Posner, Jason Clemmuss, and Krista Fures. So we're happy to have you here. I must say that the board has done a lot of work on this. We've had at least three meetings with sports officials and team managers, and there was a lot of discussion. As Paul said, the soccer people would have been more amenable to a per-player fee, but we just, I think we convinced them that it's just unmanageable, because of the teams shifting around, and the players coming and going, and so forth. This is just a much, much easier approach. And to make a long story short, the board is fully on board with the city's proposal of two dollars and fifty cents an hour. And just to cut through the forest to show you what the trees look like, two dollars and fifty cents an hour, if a sports team is going out to use a soccer field, if there are ten players utilizing that field, it costs each player twenty-five cents to use the field for an hour. There's a lot more than ten players out there, probably half that. It comes down to the point where they couldn't even buy a bottle of water for that charge, so I don't think it's a due impact on any child or family to charge these fees. And, you know, we're talking about city budgets of millions, what we're talking about here is trying to increase the city revenues by about forty thousand dollars, and as Paul said, it's only twenty-five percent of the amount we spend on the fields. All of our sports teams agree that we have some of the finest fields that they have seen. They're in excellent shape, and my hat's off to all the city employees who manage those fields. So with that, I'm going to say that, once again, it was unanimous, that we agree with the city proposal for a two-dollar-and-fifty cent per hour across the board field usage fee. Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank the board of the advisory board, and thank you for your service, and your advice that you provide us. I'd like to, Commissioner Carr, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Paul. Has the city looked at LED lights for the recreation field, or are they LED lights currently? Because I know that would probably reduce the cost in having, they're really expensive bulbs to begin with, and then replacement of LED is a lot less as often as a regular condiscent bulb is.
That's a great question. I'm gonna ask Tom Funchen to come up, because he's in charge of the lights in the facility, so.
Yeah, we did. We just replaced the lights over at Dorset Park, and the cost between the standard lights that we have now... the standard lights that we have now, the halogen lights, and the LEDs was extremely expensive at the time. We are doing some other lighting changes, LEDs around the city, but right now, the cost would be double of what we put into the lights we got now, as far as LEDs go. They have to meet a certain illumination-
Right.
-because we play these sports fields. They just don't have that technology yet. What they do have is extremely expensive.
Okay. Have we looked at, like, what the cost is to run, like, the, for electricity of the fields?
Yeah, I broke it, we broke it down. The cost is probably about, it's probably 20% less to operate on the LEDs, but the double cost on putting the lights up. You have to add additional lights, additional poles, additional lighting. So there was not a cost benefit there for doing it at the present time. Hopefully, in the future, it changes, but.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. And first, I want to thank the Parks and Rec Board for volunteering for our community. It's a fun board to sit on. It can be a little trying at times. I remember when it first came together, you had that sunshine law thing, so sometimes it makes a little challenging. But thank you for volunteering. I remember back when we started charging, you'll remember this, Mr. Smith remembers, we started charging for lighting at the fields, and we had a lot of pushback at that time from the leagues. And it was a really tough decision to make at the time. And, you know, they only make so much money. So, but, and I didn't know if that was the best idea at the time, but that's what we had, you know. So, and I've talked to Mr. Smith about this, that, you know, I just want to be assured that, you know, you all spoke with the leagues, and they're all on board, because, like I said, we got a lot of pushback last time. So, thank you for that, and I hope this works out for everybody, because we have some beautiful parks in this community and beautiful, thank you, Tom. Where are you? Oh, there you are. We do. We have, always hear great, you know, wonderful comments about our parks and fields and stuff, and they're in great shape. So I know it takes a lot of time, effort, and money on our part as well. But, and hopefully this can free up some more time, because there is also concerns, I've heard concerns, that some people can't get on the fields when they want to get on the fields. So maybe this might help that situation as well. So, thank you all so much.
Mayor, do you have a comment?
Actually, I have another question, if that's all right. I don't mean to jump in front of Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
What about the high school where, like, the senior league and the junior league play for baseball? Is that, are they being charged for that also? I'm not really sure the relationship with the high school and the athletic fields. Can someone share that with me?
No, there's no charge for those fields now.
Okay.
No.
All right. And also, I want to reiterate what Susan said. Thank you for serving on these boards, because you're all very important to the city and your service. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you got a comment?
Yes, thank you. I as well want to thank all the members here. We don't, we don't get to see you all very often, but you have an important role. I think, I've always said, when you look at, when, you know, taxpayers look at, what does my tax money go for? You know, you think first responders, police, fire, and just under that is parks and recreation. That's crucial to any full-service community. So what you all do, that we might not see as much as planning and zoning, is very important. So I want to thank you all for that aspect. I want to thank you all for your contributions to these changes, and I am in support of these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. Those leagues that we have are all residents in Tarpon Springs, or we have some that are non-residents?
The leagues are a mixture of residents and non-residents.
Okay. We do have an obligation to provide recreation to our residents, and that's part of the equality of life to the people, and that's one of the main responsibilities that we have. But we do not have the obligation to provide recreation to the non-residents. I'd like to find a way where we can actually charge the non-residents more than we do our residents, because our residents already pay from their property tax. And the expenses, the $170,000 they're coming from is from the property tax, goes to the general fund, and that's how we finance that. So I don't think it should be, the non-residents should be treated the same way as the residents, if we can find a mechanism to do that. But I believe that, and I agree with the proposed, that we should be recovering some of the expenses that we already pay. And I want to congratulate everyone involved for maintaining the fields so nice. They are beautiful. Thank you. We're now going to the public comments on this item.
Thank you, Peter Delax, 514 Ashland Avenue. As mentioned, anytime you try to readjust fee structures or how to shift an economic burden, there is a lot of times pushback, but I think you are on the right track as far as charging a user fee for field usage. And the way the gentleman explained it, a quarter an hour, I don't know if maybe $2.50 is really enough, but, you know, baby steps. Being that some of the members of the board are here, I'm not sure if it's been brought to your attention of late, or how many of you members have been there on the board, but I would like, at some point, the Rec Board to be updated on whatever plans that I mentioned to you all before that are on the shelf about the sports complex, and maybe they can start weighing in on it as far as how we can change that landfill into a sports complex that has soccer fields and baseball fields, and as even Mark Lacouris, when we talked about this years ago, talked about tournaments that we could sponsor. So, thank you for your contribution. I know it's a hard board to work on, because it's, what, y'all still at 4 o'clock on a Thursday or a Wednesday or something. So I know you don't get sometimes the participation that you would, that some of the other boards do get. The only last thing I would like to ask or mention in regards to saving money, especially with electricity, as some of you know, I live over by Witcombe Bayou, and I am a late owl. I go and check on my mom late at night, which means after 11, sometimes after midnight. And I hate having to call the police department when I see the lights on from Sizzler Field or drive-by, you know, the Rotary Park, going to Walgreens to pick up milk or something, and the lights are still on. So I don't know if we need to set up some kind of mechanism so I don't have to call the dispatcher, who then turns, calls somebody else to have somebody go out and shut the lights off. But if they're done about 9:30, 10, and it's 12:31, that's three hours of electricity burning and more heat generated, more money for Duke, and more effect on the climate. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Smith. You have anything else that you'd like to share with us?
No, I just wanted to mention that this item is on your consent agenda coming up here for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to look and see if there's any way that we can actually have additional charges for the non-residents, right? Then you can bring that later, another time.
Yes, Mayor, we will. I will add that there is something to that effect already with the recreation activity cards. We, they're free to the residents, but the non-residents pay something like $55 per person and 75 per family. So there is an extra cost to non-residents already built into our recreation program.
Yeah. Looking on your backup information that you provided to us, there are a couple cities that are already doing that. One is the city of Largo in St. John's County. So if we could ask them and see how they do it, we will have to reinvent the wheel. Thank you very much. We're now going to the consent agenda, which is item number five is the minutes. April 18 is a regular session. May 2 is a regular session. May 16 is a regular session. May 30 is the work session, joint meeting with the BOA. June 6 is a regular session. Number six is satisfaction and release of liens. Number seven is the attorney fees invoice, 54183. Number eight is special events. A is Hippie Fest, August 12, 2017. Number nine is approve the revised athletic fee, field fee structure, the one we just talked about. Number 10 is to approve the combined CAD-RMS crime scene and fingerprinting agreement with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for the year of 2018. Number 11 is the award bid number 170104-B-JJ Riverside Drive and Hillside Drive drainage and railway improvements. Number 12 is increase file number 170002-N-RS radio and page Motorola equipment and maintenance. Number 13 is the award file number 170135-C-RS aluminum sulfate through Pinellas County bid 167-0128-B-LN. Number 14 is the award file number 170136-C-CM, site materials and services, COAP Pinellas County contract number 167-0120-B-RF. Number 15 is approve increase bid number 140047-C-CM, air conditioning repairs and maintenance. Number 16 is the award file number 170137-C-RS maintenance repair and operating supplies through the United States Committee Communities Purchasing Alliance, RFP number 16154. Number 17 is extend the file 170090-Z-RS laboratory testing services through the city of Plin City, RFP 1622U-S-S. Number 18 is the award file number 170131, Athens Street Road Improvements. And number 19 is the award file number 170138, food and miscellaneous supplies. Any items that you'd like to pull?
Just got a comment.
What, which number?
Well, there's a couple of them that are having to do with, like, sidewalks and some other mitigation for flooding and some other aspects. I think it would be helpful to have some additional information in the backup and the consent. I've reached out to some staff members, and they've all been very helpful about getting me some information, but like, one page of just kind of a summary, to me, isn't enough for some of these projects. So if we could ask the city manager to just provide a little more backup data about these, I think that'd be helpful moving forward.
Thank you. But it's good that you called in the staff to get more information for that. Great, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here, non-chair, will you entertain a motion?
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousis.
Yes. We are now going to the special consent agenda.
Hey, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. This might be out of place, but I know we've got our recreation board here. It's the last item on the agenda, and they're primarily the majority of our public that's here right now. Can, would you entertain looking at item 27 sooner at all in the meeting?
We can actually skip what we're doing, and we go to that. It's just to affirm the members. It's not really to make any select-
Okay, I just know it's been a-
But if you request, we can do that.
I just know it's been a long meeting so far, and their times-
Sure, we can go to item number 27.
Everyone else's times are available, too, but.
Affirm members of the parks and recreation advisory board for 2017. This is something that we do every year. I need a motion for that.
Motion to affirm.
Second.
Any commission comment?
Just thank you all for everything you're doing. I know it's, you're volunteering. Time is, time is very valuable, obviously, and thank you for your community service to Tarpon Springs.
Are there any public comments on this item? No. Again, thank you for your service. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I didn't get a, you saying that? Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhousis.
Yes. Thank you. Now, we're going back to item number 24, which is resolution 2017-25, budget resolution.
Mayor, we're on the special consent agenda, item number 20.
Gee, we got messed up here.
That was my fault. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Item number 20, increase, RFQ number 160132-S-JJ city engineer of record. Mr. Cochin, acting city manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Oh, Paul, cover it real quick for you. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This item, we're requesting authorization to increase the annual contract amount. This is for our city engineers of record. It's actually a shared contract between two firms. In our experience, we found that seems to work better for the city to share that engineer of record between the two firms, so that we find that a certain one performs more efficiently at one type of work than the other. We're able to use those as they best fit our needs. Here, we're asking for an increase from $200,000 to $500,000, and mainly, this is because we're getting a lot of work done. This is actually a time when more money is a good thing. It's showing us moving through our projects in our capital improvement program and making good progress. I see one example here. We put in the memo is this upcoming Mirrors Boulevard project, which is quite sizable, and it's something that we request this authorization so that we can keep going with that type of work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a couple of questions on that. Are these funded or any scheduled, already budgeted?
Yes, these are in the individual projects as part of the CIP, the individual department budgets.
The other question that I have is, being that we're increasing 150%, I wonder would have been better if we have a competitive bid?
Paul, I can address that, Mayor.
Okay.
I work a lot with purchasing. When you're talking about specialized services like engineers, it's not a bidding process. It's a request for qualifications process. And back on 12/616, purchasing gave you a memo, which is in the back, which is in the backup, and basically outlined how they selected these engineering firms. They were the top one and two. And then, once you, once you select, once you rank them, then you go and you discuss price. But it's an RFQ process. It's in line with Florida statutes. So it's not a competitive bidding process, but everything was done according to purchasing standards in Florida statute to select these two firms, and we have a five-year contract with them. So that's how the process works.
Okay. Thank you. Any commission comments here, non? Any-
I've got some.
Okay.
Can you explain to me a little bit? You mentioned that the budget is built into the projects themselves. How does that work?
Yes, when we originally budget the projects, we'll have a construction cost estimate, and usually, it's a percentage of that project cost, somewhere around 15% to 20% is an industry standard for the engineering fees. So we'll go ahead and include that total cost in our budgets for the project, both the design and the construction.
Okay. How many people are typically involved, like, when we're going to an outsourced situation like this? Like, do they use their whole staff to, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, because to me, spending an additional $250,000 on top of what we're spending already, just, or 300, for a total of 500, just seems like a lot of money that we could hire staff ourselves and do something in-house moving forward. So I just want to-
Paul, can I address that real quick? Commissioner, if you, in the backup, it explains, we have a new projects development department. A lot of projects are really starting to heat up. If you look at the Mirrors project alone, it's going to be a lot of money to engineer and design that project that we won't have if we stay at the 200,000 limit. We're going up to a ceiling. We're requesting, you know, basically $500,000 as a ceiling limit, so we can complete these projects and have approval to complete them. So without a doubt, this $500,000 is there for a good reason. We have a lot of projects coming up that they're going to need to be done and designed by these engineering firms. So that's why you see the increase from the original 200,000. I believe, Paul, that Mirrors project alone is going to heat up close to 300,000, correct?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the details of that project, but I do know that that's one of these-
That's correct, Jay.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the details of that project, but I do know that that's one of these urgent ones, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's basically why this request is being made. The department has very good at, at projecting what projects are going to come up and coming back to the commission and requesting this kind of money. So I hope that helps you.
Yeah, so I'm curious to see how many people are involved, these other um, companies still. But with the Mirrors, is that like from the Mangro Circle, Mango Circle to nineteen portion? Because I thought the development that's coming in is actually me paying for the Mirrors project. Um, I don't know if anyone can speak on that tonight, but um, I'm just trying to figure out where the cost. Are we just confirming their engineers are doing a good job on the design? Or do we design this ourselves and then have them pay for part of the contract or part of the project and then?
The engineers will do the designing. This is our best estimate on what this is all going to cost as we move forward, especially with that Mirrors project. I don't have Bob Robertson here tonight, but again, he was heavily involved in this, there's backup memos in it.
Yeah.
Um, and every expenditure will be, you know, budget allocated and spent appropriately.
Thank you. Mr. Cochran, uh, I think will be beneficial if we have Mr. Robinson to come here someday and give us an update on the projects to let us know where we at.
I could pass it on to the city manager.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. And this way, we, we can actually give track of all the projects that are in progress.
Right, and you know, that, that department was newly created, of course, he's, as you know, the spearhead on your quote, River Dredge project. But um, yeah, I mean, I don't think city manager will have a problem with that at all, especially as he gets up and going and, you know, starts to identify projects to give this board periodic updates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
He probably puts it on the website too. Any other comments? Any public comments on this item? Here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number twenty-one. Award bid number seventeen, zero, one, zero, zero, dash, B, dash, JJ, Lake Tarpin Sanitarious who are expensive phase number three.
Good evening, Paul Smith, again. I'm getting a fair share of podium time tonight. Um, this, this is a, an exciting close to the highest priority area ranked in a study that goes back to the year two thousand and one, I believe. And this is the Lake Tarpin area. And just by way of background, this area was selected because of the highest potential for improvement to the environment. It's a, it was a detailed look, I was actually the project manager on that study. And it looked at the types of soils, how close you were to the Lake Tarpin water body, how impaired that water body might be by the septic tanks in the area. And as a result, this area got the highest rating for us to go forward. That was quite a large area and we've been working on that in multiple phases over the years, as you all know. Well, this is the final phase of this area one. And it's about a five-block by three-block area. It's, it's sort of near nineteen on the east side of it. And uh, once this is complete, we'll be able to move over to the second ranked area, which in this case is Seabreeze Drive, which we've already got in our budget for the design part of that work. So we're all looking forward to that, moving along. Um, this project, the good news is the contractor is someone we worked with successfully before, the low bidder. And uh, it came in some, almost three hundred thousand dollars less than the original estimate. That'll be very helpful to us as we move forward with the budget, provided that things go according to plan and we don't have any big additional expenses that we can't foresee at this point. Um, so staff recommends that uh, this be awarded to the contractor and uh, that we go ahead and get started with this project.
Thank you. I remember when you did the study that uh, this area is very sensitive to the environment. Uh, this is a big project. Do we know, uh, do we have an estimated completion time?
Yes, our original estimates are sometime in April of two thousand eighteen. So we're really uh, going to be moving along on this pretty quickly.
Thank you. Uh, I think something that we'd be talking, we, we've talked in the past that we need to keep looking for a grant to provide financial assistance to the residents to be able to hook up because it's very expensive for the people to be able to um, hook up to the uh, the network. We still looking?
Yes, we are. I will say that um, this is probably widely known, but these types of improvements to these areas go directly towards the property values, to the point that people do come to us and say, when are you going to come bring the sewer to us? So although it is a cost and it is something that um, we do have some options for people to finance, at least the, the city, part of the city portion of the cost, um, it, it is a net benefit to the homeowner as well.
Yeah, I was looking for some help from the state or federal government to help, since we helping the environment.
Yes, we're not able to locate anything like that at this point.
Thank you. Any commission comments?
I just want to say, this is, this is a long time coming and I'm, I'm glad we're, we're moving forward with it because I know uh, I've been talking about it and Mayor's been talking about it since at least two thousand eight.
Yeah, yeah.
So um, I'm happy to see that we're moving forward. And I think, what is the cost, about three thousand or so dollars to each um, resident?
Well, yeah, the city portion of the cost is around two thousand and then you've got the private contractor doing the plumbing and abandoning the septic tank. And I, I'd be afraid to hazard a guess on that, but we do see that often neighborhoods are successful getting a um, a contractor to do uh, sort of a group pricing because they're already in the area. It's something that we kind of stay arms-length from because we don't want to get in as a recommender of something that we don't control. But it does seem to work well. So I, I think the result is the costs are as low as they can be.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to see this moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've got a couple of questions. So does it require everyone to hook up then? Obviously, I would think that would be the case.
Yes, there's a state statute actually that requires it and it's three hundred and sixty-five days from the notice of completion. So we've been uh, proactive in getting out in the neighborhood and letting people know about it even before we were coming to you tonight because we want them to know we're designing this, give them plenty of time to start thinking about it. And then they'll get a notice when, when it's complete, so they'll have that year to make arrangements to connect.
Gotcha. Um, I reached out to um, Mr. Robertson about the water piping, uh, actual drinking water in the area. And the, those pipes were installed back in seventy-nine, eighty-three, and eighty-nine. So they do have some age on them and I asked, is it possible for that to be involved? If you're tearing up any roads or if you're tearing up any areas, to also look at those also. Um, and he mentioned since the, it is well below the budget, that there could be a possibility of looking at updating those pipes in the area. Because I know the infrastructure, our pipes uh, throughout the town does have some age on it. And if we're tearing up areas, it, it makes sense to, to use resources um, along uh, alongside each other uh, so we're not double paying maybe, I don't know, five or six years down the road when we do have to replace the pipes. So that sounds like it is an option, but thank you for uh, your group uh, and the work you guys are working on with this because uh, how environmental sensitive Tarpin Springs is with the lake, with the river, with the bayous and with the Gulf of Mexico, um, all, all surrounding us. So uh, thanks again for bringing this forward.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion?
Uh, motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes, we're now going to the item number twenty-two, authorized execution of uh, inter-local agreement with Pinellas County to extend penny for Pinellas, local infrastructure sales surtax.
Um, defer to the city attorney.
Uh, what you have is an inter-local agreement that is executed between the municipalities within the county and the county um, as a means to disseminate the penny for Pinellas dollars, should that be approved on November's ballot by the electorate. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
This is identical agreement that we had the last time.
Yeah, it hasn't changed, except for, yeah, the, the, uh, obviously it's going to be updated for um, the next ten years. Um, and again, it does still have to be approved um, on, at the election of November seventh.
Thank you. Penny for Pinellas is very important pro, uh, program for us. We, because of that, we would have been, been able to do many projects. And if it's approved, we're going to be doing a lot more projects. So uh, can you uh, Mr. Cochran, would you please tell us how we're going to inform the, the residents so they know the importance of this program?
Well, thank you, Mayor. We, we've already been informing the residents and not only Yawashto County and other cities. As most people know, the vote is November seventh of two thousand seventeen. But on our website, um, for anyone that's watching tonight, we have a whole segment on penny for Pinellas with all kinds of link to um, the county's website, um, they have a penny website, all kinds of different information and presentations that were done. And I think in the future, um, we would need to obviously um, utilize, I know I talked to Mark about it, uh, putting out informational flyers in our water bill when that time is right. Uh, we could also look at social media, Facebook, putting materials, again informational-
Sure.
-materials at city hall, the library, and other locations throughout the city. So um, without doubt, it needs to be advertised and the information needs to get out to our residents.
Alright, thank you. And every time I do have a Tahoe meetings, I always explain the uh, the program.
Right.
How beneficial that is. Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? Here none, are there any public comments? I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number twenty-three, authorized revision of personnel rules. Mr. Jella, are you going to handle that?
Um, I can, I can handle that, Mayor.
You are? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you can see in the backup, we had a little, a committee that worked um, pretty extensively with our labor attorney to look at some of our rules um, and get them up to date. Um, you know, with, with the times and with, you know, applicable federal, state, and local law. Um, these updates apply to rule one, which is prohibition of discrimination, rule four, applications, exams, eligibility list, rule seven, conflict of interest, rule eleven deals with leaves, rule thirteen harassment um, and discrimination, and rule eighteen, discipline. Um, we all agree um, with these updates um, to the policies, especially um, when you're dealing with rule eighteen um, with discipline. Some of those, some of those um, sections were outdated, now they're up to date. Um, another thing we looked at too, um, if approved by you tonight, um, being in a credit police department, um, we go through this every year with our policies and procedures. And we also have a electronic computerized system called Power DMS where all of our policies are posted on there, any kind of training that we do with it, they also have to go in there, they have to sign off on it. And we are going to implement that over here at city hall. I'm going to have my accreditation manager work with our HR director to have that um, system put over here so we can get all the policies out to our people, do training, everything will be electronic, sign off. So it's a great way just to keep people up to date on the policies and, you know, keep that culture strong with, with our policies and rules. So um, we're asking for your approval of these policies. Everything has been um, put out pretty well in advance because um, you know, there are a lot of changes, but so that the commissioners can see them and ask any questions before this meeting. So if there are any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
That was one of the questions that I had, uh, how we're going to inform the employees and you already answered that. Uh, the only recommendation that I have is when they do the monthly safety meetings, if, just tell them that we now have new rules, though the news have been, the rules have been updated and um, they will be available to them on a computer system or as a hard copy.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ways, with, with the Power DMS system, we will implement, it's gonna, you know, there's a whole training module that goes up. We'll put that out to everyone and everyone's going to have to sign off on it. And it'll, it'll become a way of doing things, but it's a great system and I look forward to getting it up and running over here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any commission comments?
I've had plenty of questions, but I've got them all clarified before the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments? I need a motion for that, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor Lausis.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are now going to the item number twenty-four, which is resolution two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty-five, budget resolution, two thousand seventeen.
Resolution two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty-five, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, be resolved by the Board of Commissioner, oh, by title only.
Thank you. Any public comments? Any commission comments? Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes. Item number twenty-five is the ordinance two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty, application seventeen, dash, forty-three, rezoning amendment for uh, Ms. Galusis for six twenty Bayshore Drive from R one hundred to uh, one hundred A. This is the second reading, it's quasi-traditional, the city attorney will read the title and it will explain the quasi-traditional process.
This is ordinance two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty, an ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida for approximately zero point eight acres of real property located at six twenty Bayshore Drive, application seventeen, dash, forty-three, from R one hundred, R one hundred A, providing for findings and provided, providing for an effective date. As this is the second reading, I will just swear anyone who is wishing to speak and ask that you just provide any updated information. All those wishing to speak this evening, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give? Is it truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
There is no additional information on this application. The applicant apologizes with, that she had to leave.
That's it? Are there any commission comments? I'll entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
This was published in Tampa Bay Times by title only on April twenty-eighth. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes, resolution two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty-three, Tarpon Plaza partial replat.
Resolution number two thousand seventeen, dash, twenty-three, a resolution of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat, application seventeen, dash, forty-nine, Tarpon Plaza partial replat, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon and providing for an effective date.
And with that, um, I can answer any questions that you might have. This is a very simple replat. It's creating two lots out of a single lot that is the former office depot site for uh, the Burger King property. So um, with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any commission comments, questions, any public comments? Roll call, please.
Motion.
Uh, motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Nikita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lausis.
Yes, well, item twenty-seven has been completed, so that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to staff comments. Major Young, and thank you for being here tonight.
It was a pleasure, thank you.
Any comments?
No comments.
City attorney?
No comments, just thank you for having me.
Thank you. Chief Cochran.
Multiple, I have multiple piles around here, but Jeff, um, it's nice sitting down on that end and, you know, but um, nope, I have no comments, Mayor, thank you. And um, everyone have a good night.
Madam city clerk?
No comments.
Nothing? Commissioner Nikita?
Um, the only thing, I think our next meeting isn't until July, is that correct?
Yes.
So we've moved our-
After the Fourth of July.
Until the Fourth. Well, no, but I mean a regular-
July eleventh, right?
Yeah, so I wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July.
Okay.
And uh, I want to thank, um, I had a Flag Day ceremony at the Elks Lodge and I want to thank um, all of everybody here that attended. Um, appreciate you all being there. It was, nicely showed up, but um, thank you again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Panther? No comment. Commission Carr?
Uh, welcome back, Vice Mayor. It's good to have you back with us. Uh, also, I just want to reiterate, uh, all the volunteers that volunteer on our city boards and advisory boards, uh, they're a very important part of our city. Uh, so thanks again for everything that they do and also to the city staff members uh, that helped so much to get these meetings together. I know there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to uh, just get this going um, twice a month. So also want to wish everyone safe travels this summer and a safe, happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. I have uh, several comments to make. Um, just to remind everyone that July fourth, we have the picnic at the Great Park. It begins at ten AM and it's free to everyone. We also have the fireworks and that begins with eight PM?
I believe so, yes.
Alright, uh, Thursday, July sixth, we have the Sunset Beach Concert, that begins at seven PM. Friday, July seventh, is the first Friday at six PM. Month is already going, guys. Um, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Williams. She's the new president of St. Petersburg College and we're looking forward to work with her, as we did in the past when she was the Provost- as we did in the past when she was the provost here in, uh, Tarpon Springs Campus. Uh, also like to congratulate former Congressman Michael Billy Racus on having a street name after him in Kalivnos. They have a street now that's called Michael Billy Racus. Uh, also, I am very happy to announce and report to you that the Senior Information Center will begin operation October 1st. Um, the center will be locating in the library at the small conference room. It will be operating three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The operation will be run by volunteers, I was, as we discussed that in the past. The library staff will provide assistance to the volunteers, uh, but the Senior Information Center volunteers will be under the Police Department Crime Prevention Division, supervised by Officer John Ulrich. And he also have many contacts from, um, his duties, crime watch, and so he can notify the people, so I think is appropriate, and I'd like to thank all of you for your support to the seniors. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting tonight, and is adjourned at 8:38. Neil. Good night, everyone.
Good night.